Hi.
Hi.
Post-approaching, motion carries. For the public session to order, please stand for the saying of Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I turn it over to the superintendent now for the Falcons of the Month and the January graduates.
Okay, good evening. These are our paper board meetings for those that know. The opportunity to be here with students and families are absolutely my favorite nights, but I know it's also they're also the favorite nights of our Board of Education. So tonight we have the distinction of honoring our next group of Falcons of the Month. Each school in our district celebrates more students each and every month would be outstanding. We have asked our schools to select one individual from the many honored to represent the group. Therefore, the students we will be honoring tonight were selected because they personified the trait or characteristic being celebrated this month. In other words, these students represent the best of the best. The certificate each student will receive reads as follows. Whereas the philosophy of education of the Niagara field central school district calls for aiding all students in the development and achievement of their potential, and whereas the primary goals of the school district include encouraging each student to develop a sense of values, instill a feeling of responsibility to self and others, as well as an appreciation of good citizenship, being resolved at the Board of Education of the Niagara field central school district hereby recognizes the following students. Our first student that we'll be recognizing tonight is Anthony Bisatsky. Anthony? Next, we have Hunter Huggins. Congratulations.
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 Next, we have Brielle Peterson. Next, we have Lily Ann Whistle. Next, we have Dawson Jonathan.
Congratulations.
And next, we have Jaden Jones. So next are graduates. Mr. White, if you could come up.
We have three graduates in January this year. Two of them are here with us this evening. Brock Crochet is a January graduate, but I don't see him here this evening. Alyssa Antone and Alina Spolino. Mr. Lalanich is principal of Niagara Regional High School. I certify that Brock Crochet, Alyssa Antone, and Alina Spolino have fulfilled all requirements set forth under New York State Education Law and Niagara Regional Policy, and are now prepared to receive recognition for the hard work made successfully completed.
By the power vested in me by the Board of Regents of the State of New York and the Superintendent of Schools, it is my honor to confer upon Brock, Alyssa, and Alina the Niagara Regional High School diploma and all the rights and benefits pertaining to them. Congratulations.
And we always have a little reception after a student of the month and our graduates, so we'll take a recess until about twenty-five after seven-thirty somewhere in there. And enjoy some punch and cookies, please. I'm gonna call for a motion to appoint Jan Ball as clerk of the Board pro temp. Is her second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post-approaching, motion carries. All right, any resident comments? I can't, I can't hear.
She has to figure out a time.
Three minutes. Yeah. We're pretty good. We're pretty liberal, though, letting you go over. Sure. Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, perfect.
I myself am slightly hard of hearing and too good to face to face. So, um, see peripherally, if you want me to stop talking, if you could please wave your hand. I will stop talking. Okay, thank you. I'm going to be reading an article by Alan Stevo. He is author of Face Mask Heard Kids, also Face Mask in One Lesson, as well as the Bitcoin manifesto located in California. Dear reader, the wearing of a face mask to protect against a respiratory virus is an act of grand deceit. It is a behavior that defies research on the topic. Wearing a face mask, as this article, one of many, points to, is unsafe to do and is ineffective. Until the narrative around mandatory masking has changed, each day by six AM Eastern, I will post both. I will both post here and send out a fine base reason why no one should wear a face mask. I ask that you help me circulate these pieces to those around you who you believe could most benefit from them. It is important not to remain silent on this topic. These are important discussions to be having with friends, family members, business owners, healthcare practitioners, public servants like yourselves, and others in the community. The ills of 2020 and beyond were a long time coming. Little of what took place was new. In fact, it was more of the same dishonesty from once trusted institutions. The case of Biops illustrates this well. Biops was a painkiller introduced in the late 1990s by the American pharmaceutical giant Merck. It was marketed as an improvement over other prescription painkillers based on a better safety profile and reduced side effects in general. It was approved for the treatment of conditions ranging from rheumatoid arthritis to migraines and quickly became a popular drug around the world. It was later withdrawn from the market due to a large number of deaths associated with its use. By 2005, virtually every trusted pharmaceutical and medical institution had been proven a total unrepentant sham, unwilling to engage in the most meaningful ethics to save lives as long as they knew there was across-the-board cooperation. Fifteen years later, no one should be shocked when society-wide that same behavior occurred from the eyes of March 2020 forward. The pharmaceutical establishments, medical establishments, doctors, media, government, politicians, and other institutions have long been cooperating to do exactly that. The true shocker should be that anyone in the general public continues to trust such corrupt institutions, even going so far as extending more power to them to rule the lives of average people despite being proven irregardless and corrupt. I do not expect you to change the world or to change these institutions, but I do expect you to remove these institutions from positions of influence in your own life. I'm going to use the example of Biops to illustrate why you should do exactly that. On September 30th, 2004, Merck announced a worldwide recall of their painkiller Biops. This came a full five years after Merck knew that Biops killed people. Millions took it. Billions in profit were earned for Merck. Thousands predictably died who would not have if they would have just kept their previous painkiller, which Merck claimed Biops, to be safer than. Not only was this information known, but influential that Merck got the New England Journal of Medicine and the United States Food and Drug Administration to assist in releasing their killer drug and selling it to the public as safe and effective. Silence from these institutions would have been more ethical than their cooperation in this mass murder. Their drama story hinges on the hiding of three heart attacks in order to hide a concerning trend. This made it possible to make a false claim in November 1999 about the heart attack risk related to Biops and to continue to repeat that claim. While the trends are disconcerting, the number of events are small. This is familiar verbiage to anyone following public health officials if they talk about the one-size-fits-all health mandates. Safe and effective is the frontline defense of these mandates. When that defense is pierced, disconcerting but small, is the backup defense. The lie that a treatment is safe and effective always seems to be replaced by the claim that horrifying side effects are disconcerting but small in frequency. Ultimately, the truth prevailed, but only after many are killed and injured by the treatment. Only those who wrongly put their trust in liars are ever the victim, which carries some poetic justice and a lesson to be cautious around untrustworthy serpents. Trusting a serpent is a fatal mistake in its own. Those who dare reveal such information publicly are lifesavers for they speak truth to those who will listen. They are also labeled pariah and risk career, wealth, and well-being. There is a cost to standing against corruption. In all eras, there had been a cost. If there were not, corruption would never exist, for the remedy to corruption would come so cheaply. In their timeline, coverage of the events around Biops, National Public Radio NPR reports. As of November 1st, 1999, seventy-nine patients out of four thousand taken Biops had had serious heart problems or had died, compared with forty-one patients taking naproxen. Taking the experimental Biops is nearly twice as dangerous for the heart as taking naproxen. Naproxen is available in generic form. Biops was marketed as a safer, though more expensive, replacement. It was not safer, but it was more expensive. The fact that this reporting came from NPR is quite significant. NPR has long been derided for its extreme political bias. Much of its coverage of politicians came with a strong liberal bias. NPR could often be found attacking the enemies of their favorite politicians while leaving their favorite politicians untouched. At the time of the Biops scandal, however, NPR was at least still doing critical reporting on pharmaceutical companies, a true public service. This independent coverage by NPR and its critical take on drug companies was recognized as a flaw in the system by the powers that be. No news organization was to exist that behaved this way, let alone a government-funded news organization. By the end of the first year of the Obama administration, 2009, this matter had been handled, and it would therefore be nearly impossible to find any reporting from NPR that was critical of the pharmaceutical industry. Prior to that, NPR had been a true treasure on pharmaceutical industry coverage. Government media was put in order by the pharmaceutical interests and related interests. The few publicly and privately owned media institutions that were unbiased were also put in order as well. The New York Times was also once such an institution. The medical safety and vaccine safety weighing of the Democrat Party had formed and solidified by the 2004 presidential primaries and had been forced to be recognized by the 2008 presidential primaries. Such views were surgically removed from friendly media, hardly given a voice in the mainstream from 2009 to the present. How could this have happened? How this could have happened is not the question as much as the question is, how could we have kept trusting them? Once the Biops scandal had become too public to ignore, the prominent medical journal, The Lancet, finally chimed in. The Lancet estimated eighty-eight thousand had heart attacks and thirty-eight thousand died from Biops. Other researchers estimate the real numbers were more like five hundred thousand deaths from Biops. It was more dangerous than naproxen and even far more dangerous than the commonly used aspirin. Had only had this drug been the darling of the pharmaceutical industry and the darling of the medical research establishment, doctors loved it too. Twenty-five million Americans received Biops prescriptions after being told by their doctors that it was safer than the alternative. Being safer than the alternative was the whole reason for Biops' existence. Their patiently foolishly, their patients foolishly believed their doctors' sales pitches, and their media loved Biops. It had an average television advertising budget of a hundred million each year. This may explain why, to this day, the American media has remained nearly silent on the topic of Biops. No real inquiry from the media ever took place. No true demand for reform ever took place. Instead, the media obediently told a story of how badly this caught up with Merck in court. That was a total lie. In November 2007, Merck paid a weapon four-point-eight-five billion to settle the personal liability lawsuits of approximately forty-seven thousand plaintiffs and two-hundred-sixty-five potential class action cases. It was, at the time, believed to be the largest drug settlement ever. Remember, even the establishment's lamp set said thirty-eight thousand people died, though not each one of those people went to court seeking recompense. The true death count is far larger than this, but even using that number, the details of the settlement are shockingly small. The settlement was not as big of a deal as the media had claimed. This did not stop the media from making a huge deal of what a shock that the settlement was and how severe it was. Four-point-five-eight, four-point-eight-five billion divided by forty-seven thousand plaintiffs comes out to a hundred-three thousand, one-hundred-ninety-one dollars and forty-nine cents per family before lawyer's fees, expenses, and taxes. Are we really to believe a hundred-three thousand, one-hundred-ninety-one dollars and forty-nine cents per person and no jail time is a reasonable solution for a company that knew for five years that they would kill people and did exactly that? Merck may have even ended up ahead. It was making two billion per year on Biops at the time of the drug recall. One murder can be ended up across border manholes to occur alongside large media trials with grand public outrage. Multi-million dollar wrongful death suits followed. Yet thirty-eight thousand deaths resulting in no jail time? Virtual total silence from watchdogs on the particulars of the matter? Tiny per-death settlement fees? No jail time for a murderer? No reform? No company even put out of business? Some point out that with a new class of COVID shots, manufacturers are exempt from liability. In the example of Biops, pharmaceutical companies were practically exempt from liability already. They went through the world providing inherently dangerous chemicals to people while claiming them to be safer than what the people were already using. They lied to people, telling them that if they wished, switched, they would live longer, healthier lives. The exact opposite was true. The people who believed them were cheated out of precious health and life. No one has gone to jail, and Merck has had very little financial impact from the mass killing of so many Americans. The issue at hand here, though, is not three heart attacks, thirty-eight thousand additional causes of heart disease or death. Five hundred thousand dead, four-point-eight-five billion, a media that lies to you, doctors that lie to you, a pharmaceutical establishment that lies to you, US government watchdogs that lie to you. It is not about covering up debt to make money. It is not about corruption at the New England Journal of Medicine or in the research community as a whole. Those issues take years to resolve. The real issue is this. You cannot trust the institutions to put your child first. They do not care about you. They do not care about your family. They do not care about your child. Quit pretending they do. Make them a hundred percent irrelevant in your decision-making process. If you absolutely cannot ignore entities like these, then you must take them into account. Perhaps you can garner this lesson from the Biops story. You are often better off doing the exact opposite of what lawmakers, the US government, the media establishment, doctors, and the medical journals advise. You do not need to change the world. You do not need to change the way your neighbors think. You do not need to move government. All that is nice, but the priority is protecting yourself and your family from these lying social paths. That can be done right now. And that can be done with every decision you make. Say no to these, all these nonsense, one-size-fits-all public health mandates that they want to push upon you and your family. I wish this were not the world we live in. It is. There should be dozens of widely published conclusive studies about how bad face masks are widely covered in the media. There should also be total outrage at all levels of government that mask mandates still exist either in the public sector or private sector. Hundreds of public health officials in each state should be put on trial and prevented from ever holding your position of public confidence again. That is not the time we live in, but we may get there. The research leaves many questions unanswered about why anyone would be so foolish with such clearly dangerous public health approaches and so tyrannical as to force them upon everyone in society. The rest of this book, Face Mask Heard Kids, analyzes the available science to demonstrate that the face mask is not safe for you, your child, or anyone else, and that no person and certainly no child should be compelled to wear a face mask. Thank you so much for bearing with me. I appreciate it. Obviously. In no way I'm here. That is it. And then it's done. Our own public health official has not been able to show proof that a virus was ever isolated. In addition to the New York State Department of Health, the CDC, the WHO, there's over two hundred governments and NGOs around the world that have not been able to prove that a virus exists outside of a culture. They're already mixing it. And they haven't proved it in there yet. They put it in this mix. It's all dead tissue, by the way. And then it grows, but it's antibiotic, it's a psychopathic effect of the experiment itself. And the same thing happens without a tissue sample. So. Putting it out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on with the consensus agenda items. A call for motion to accept the consensus agenda as submitted. All second? Second, anything to discuss? If not, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post-approaching, motion carries. Call for motion to accept the personnel report as submitted. Anything to separate and discuss? All those in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post-approaching? Motion carries. My policy committee? March 6 meeting is canceled. The next meeting is May 1st. I'm just following my normal suit of reading your report. Yeah. You have the internal claims audit report there as informational items. Dan, you wanna cover our ex-official student members' report that you posted?
Ben Moore, our student ex-official member, proved again his touchy-edgedness. Although he's not feeling well today, he sent a list of things that he would report on tonight had he been here. So, first one is that the vote for senior suprematives actually opened up recently. He also said that spring sports are starting. As many of you may know, the spring athletic meeting is tonight at Southern Hot in the hot. And he said, "We actually have a few students who are going on to regional skills USA competition on March 5th at Alfred State." And last, he's announced that there will be a spring dance that's being planned for April 21st.
Very good. Okay, move on to the superintendent's report.
Tom Sather. Yep, thank you very much. Just a quick little update for Board of Education. We will be participating in three different workforce one job fairs over the next two months, one in March, two in April. Again, the primary focus there is to only take a look at our staffing needs are, but also look at staffing needs for next year, in particular bus drivers at this time, all those bus attendants, so we'll continue our quest to work on getting some new train needs into the fold here at the district. And of course, working through the budget process now to identify our professional staffing needs for next year. Thank you.
The auditorium work, we expect to start sometime in April. We have an April 1st start date. Once we get a little bit closer to that date, sometime in March here, we'll be sending something out to our school community, just related to the traffic pattern changes that will see here at high school. Probably wait till after bid day to send that. I want to say thank you to the Los Angeles Police Department. I know Officer Smith was here a little bit ago. They did some really great work for our district related to a tabletop exercise, and it was specific to lessons learned from Uvalde. Uvalde, and they did a really great job with it. Today was actually the last presentation with our high school, so all of our schools have received that. And prior to the event, because they're doing a lot of work prior to the event, I want to thank all of the police agencies in our region, our fire, our ambulance, who are all spending time right now planning for our March 15th Staff Development Day. On that day, we will be conducting active shooter drills at both Eric Rowby and West Street Elementary Schools. active shooter drills at both, uh, Eric Rowby and Western Elementary Schools. It's so valuable, um, to the district that they give up their time to work with us on this drilling. We learn a lot from it each time we do it. And I know it's really important to them and to us that all of those agencies get into our buildings. Um, so that the first time that they're, they're, they have to ever come to our school because of any kind of emergency, we don't want that to be the only time they know about you. The, um, our next Board of Education meeting, I just wanted to remind everybody, is March sixth. On that day, we will have presentations from our departments related to the budget. Um, tonight, we need to make, the board needs to make determination on whether or not they plan to exceed the tax levy limit. And, um, just as a reminder, if you haven't heard, heard another news and radios consistently, the eclipse is coming. That day, we are not in school. We are not in session. That's all I have.
Any questions, superintendent's report? All right, we'll move to the finance report, the budget presentation.
I'm gonna focus on two things tonight. All of this presentation, you've seen, most of it, you've seen twice. All of it you saw last night, but there's a couple of things that we've added. So those two things, we're gonna talk about tonight. One of them has to do with, um, our BOCs who provided our report. I'll get there in a second here. Did I miss? Did I? Oh, thank you. So, um, if you remember, the governor put out her executive aid run. So at the top, you see twenty-four, twenty-five executive budget proposal. This is a comparison of that proposal to the most updated school aid runs effective February that had our most recent data included in those runs, okay? And what you'll see, if you remember back to what the, the new monies that were, um, put into the foundation aid based on the calculations in the executive run, the governor's run, it amounted to about twenty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five new dollars for a district. That was it in foundation aid. If they simply used the formula, um, what you would get is a one point two-six percent increase, which is about a three hundred and sixteen thousand dollar difference between that and what the governor was proposing, okay? We're certainly hoping for a number from the state that's significantly more than that. I challenge you to find something out there in the last couple of years that's gone up just one point two-six percent. Good luck. Um, you know, costs have all gone up, so we're hoping that that number goes up, too. But this is the most recent update, okay?
So just to review once again, um, this is the calculation that the state makes me go through to just calculate where we would be at for our levy limit next year. And at the bottom, as you can see, our levy limit plus exclusions is thirty-seven million two hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred five dollars, which is at three point zero eight percent over prior year. And the prior year number is there, thirty-four million seven hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars with a difference of, or an increase of, uh, two million five hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars. That would be going to the maximum levy limit. Um, let me talk about mine.
Oh, sure.
So I'm still working on the actual expenditure budget, but, um, right now, it's, uh, about four, I think it's, we have it at about four percent now over pri- over the current year. Um, as you know, this year, we supplemented the budget with reserves and fund balance and, um, a quick calculation, I anticipate that we're going to be eating into that this year. Probably by about one point two million-ish, so, um. It's just, just to let you know, it wouldn't be, it's money I'd be using this year to balance the budget, which I wouldn't have for next year to balance the budget.
So the one thing that we are, the board, we did a board act on this evening is whether or not you have an intention to, um, exceed the cap. So that is something that you'll need to act on. The rest of the presentation is really the same. Do you have any questions for us before we, um, go back to our seats?
Yeah, so the way I understand, about one point some million dollars will come out of the fund balance, just to kind of balance the budget.
That's my calculation.
Okay, roughly, roughly. For this, for this school year, so, you know, we we balanced the budget when we did it with millions, right, of dollars. Of those millions that we set aside to possibly fill that gap, this year, we would, the first year, that we'd actually be utilizing that at the end of the day. Like when, when our budget ends in June of June thirty, right, we will have actually had to expend that. So, as opposed to in past years where there's been additional funds left that can be put into reserves to buy buses and do those things, there will not be, we don't expect there to be any of that available. So that we, we won't actually have to utilize those reserves. And the idea is, you know, you, you budget with reserves, and the idea of the here's their difficulty, you're gonna utilize some of them, but you have to do that with any kind of regularity, that's when you start to, you know, be concerned.
I mean, uh, it's easy for me to say this, because I understand that they're on the news hour. But the fact is, unless something changes, we can't continue to afford to do what you might do this year. And there's no way you can keep on big reserves, the taxes to compensate for that anyways. So somehow, you gotta do business something a little different. I don't know the answer is, and I don't expect you to, but something has to change somewhere in the budget for us to survive without having to really push a burden on the taxpayers.
Yep, and one, just one more thing I'll add to that. Remember, when we talk about, um, reserves, that all, all of those are our reserves. So our ERS, our TRS, our, um, transportation reserves, right? Those are all reserves that go towards this money. There, one of the real differences, right, with this, this year would be that last year, what, what we, how much too much for a bus? Um, eight hundred. Eight, so eight hundred and ten thousand dollars was, was one of the restricted reserves that we plan to utilize. That's okay. That's great. You can just use that. That's, you know, gets close to that million-dollar number. Issue, and think about this and then multiply by three, is that when you do that in multiple years, not only are you draining down on that transportation reserve, you're also not having any left over money to put into a transportation reserve. And then those transportation reserves, as we know, very soon, each bus is gonna cost us three times what the, the four ones cost. So, you know, absolutely, Rick, I, you know, that's, ju- just to give you an idea, it's all of the reserves, not just like the, um, our unappropriated fund balance.
All right, items for board discussion then, um, is obviously the, uh, exceeding the tax levy limit. Um, I do not see us doing that. I'm leaving it up to you guys, though, for discussion.
I agree.
All right, then I will call for a motion, uh, to state that the board will not exceed the tax levy limit. Seconded. Any, any further discussion of that? And all those in favor of supporting not exceeding the tax levy limit, please say aye. Aye. Those abstaining? All right, very good. Right, any other items for board discussion? Any old business? Any new business?
She, uh, she should have brought it up, but her court was retiring September. Now, she will be back in this position for September, right? She just saw, okay. Not that I don't like to say.
It's, it's been rough on people tonight.
Trying to make sure.
He was dissing Mike before and Hazel and.
This ain't no early, it happened on the agenda.
No, for that group, we've actually asked them to give us six months' notice. Um, it allows us to, because the positions are so unique for some of our confidential positions, it gives us, us an opportunity to get some people trained around to be in the position.
I understand.
Thank you.
Right then, um, any further public comments? Any board member comments? All right, then. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those abstaining? We're adjourned.